I would like to call that Tuesday, November 21st, 2023 Papillion City Council Meeting Order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday. Mumgarth. Gaines. Glover. Fanslaw. Kluk. Stube. Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We have two presentations tonight. One is an oath of office for a new police officer. Chief Blake, I'd like to invite you guys up.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to present to you Blake Dunkirk. And Blake, we're excited to have Blake. Blake was born in Maryville, Indiana. He graduated from Abraham Lincoln High School, Council of S Iowa. Then earned his Bachelor of Behavioral Science from Evangel University. Before joining the Papillion Police Department, he was a behavioral health technician at Boystown National Research Hospital. He also graduated from the Air Force National Guard Tech School in 2023 and is currently a medic for the National Guard. So, we're extremely happy to have Blake. When Deputy Chief Orchard and I do these interviews, when candidates get to that last step, there's just something different about Blake from some candidates I've interviewed in the past. He's got a good heart. And I always ask individuals, why do you want to do this job, especially in this, you know, this type of environment? And he said, because I want to make a difference in people's lives. I did that at Boystown with kids. My parents did it with individuals, and I want to do that here. And it was just a really profound answer. And he's also one of the few candidates I've had that talked about de-escalation. And so, he's had to do that at Boystown with juveniles that have, he dealt with, I believe, juveniles that had behavioral or behavioral issues as well as substance abuse issues. And so, he understands the importance of dealing with individuals in crisis. So, we're excited to have him. And I know you've got some family here. So, if you'd like to introduce them, is your mother, your sister, nephew, and your fiancee?
My mother's right here in the green, and then my nephew's Dayton right here, my sister Jasmine, and my fiancee Kelsey.
Always warn people, the oath is long, but it's set up in state statute. I state your name.
I, Blake Dunkirk.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion.
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of police officer.
According to law and the best of my ability.
According to law and best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member of.
Nor am I a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time.
And during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of.
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Chief. Oh, you had to do a badge, don't you?
got a few friends with him. ALO's been doing a big installation of fiber in Papillion, so we're excited about that. Talked to a lot of mayors around the state that are ALO communities, and they're really glad to have the competition and the service in. But as all that's going in, some people have got questions, and been doing a lot of communications. And I know we've been directing people to ALO if they have questions, but figure kind of a midpoint in the installation process would be good to probably get an update, and we can keep helping communicate. So, welcome.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council and residents of the great city of Papillion. My name's Dave Miller. I'm the general manager for ALO. John McHenry is here as well. John oversees a lot of our construction and restoration, primarily in Papillion, but the other communities that we're constructing. I've got with us other ALO team members, as well as our general contractor members from Bauer Construction. So, we are here and more than happy to answer questions. I want to just kind of give a brief overview update, and then I'll turn it over to John for specifics. You know, when we originally came to announce our excitement for building out Papillion, one of the things we always share is that ALO has four core values that we adhere to every day. Those are to be honest, exceptional, local, and hassle-free. So, tonight, I just wanted to state that we haven't been faithful in all four of those here in Papillion. I'm going to be very honest, there's one, and tell you that we haven't, to this point, been exceptional in some cases, and we certainly haven't been hassle-free. That usually is how it goes when we're constructing and out our fiber network. But as we have delved into this a little further and hearing some concerns that you all have received, and we strive to do our best to address every one of those, we thought it was important to come here and publicly address those and let you know that we're here to reset and reaffirm our commitment to doing things appropriately. So much so, that with some of the issues and concerns that have been brought to some of you, and certainly been brought to us, we've had a incident of some miscommunication because one of the projects that we've been working on and very excited about is the Papillion La Vista Public School. We're building out that network. And in the process of building out that network, we had some miscommunication on our part, which means we failed to send out the proper mailers to certain residence areas of Papillion, which caused people to obviously ask, who is this in my yard and what are they doing? We completely understand. We have circled back with our marketing team, and we've made more of a concerted effort to make sure that folks are educated and know what timelines are, know what we're doing, and who we're doing it with as it pertains to Bauer. So, all that to say is, we want to make sure if there are additional concerns that we're not aware of, please, we want to know those, and there may be some folks in the audience we're willing to stick around this evening, meet with you, hear those, work with you to resolve it. In fact, John and his team does an excellent job of resolving issues and making sure that we come to an agreement on all of those. Because our core value of being exceptional, we know that when we come into a community, we are going to kick up dust, which we stated when we were first here, but we realize it's kind of like if you've ever remodeled, say, your kitchen. You know, you're going to have disruption, you're going to have dust, it's going to be a big inconvenience for a period of time, and that's where you all are, and we are with you in this project. But the end result is, when it's done, when it's finished, you've got something more beautiful than you could have imagined. And that is our goal, and we've been doing this for 20 years. So, we are encouraging you to stay with it, stay with us. We'll kick it up a notch to make sure we're answering all questions and concerns, making it hassle-free for you because, again, we've been doing this for a long time, we know what the end result is. But we want to pause tonight and say, we're here to listen to any additional concerns and work with you to get it, get it straightened out. John, do you have anything you'd like to add? And then, I guess we can open it up for questions.
Yeah, definitely. My name is Jonathan McHenry. I'm the field engineer for, or field engineer supervisor for all of Nebraska. Just wanted to address a couple of things. I know the communication was definitely one of the big, big issues that we had. So, we have reassessed the needs for the Papillion La Vista market specifically, and we are in the process of hiring a community outreach team. That will be a part-time team. They're going to go out in the early evenings, make contact with homeowners, explain that we are coming. They're going to go ahead of our contractors. We've also ordered A-frame yard signs. We're going to try to put those at the entrance to every neighborhood. That way, people can see it prior to us starting our construction. Let's see. And then, we are also reached out to our marketing team, and we are sending out a complete round of mailers, again, to all the, all of the active areas, as well as the upcoming ones. That way, everybody gets a secondary round of notification. Hopefully, they don't make it in the trash like they usually do. So, and then our door tagging, we are going to step that process up as well. So, not only will our community outreach team be door tagging if they don't make contact with somebody, our contractors will be door tagging when they go out to mark our berry path. And then, the day of us beginning work, they will also be attempting contact and putting another door tag up. So.
Mr. Sunday.
Yeah. Mr. McHenry.
Yes.
It's inevitable from time to time that your company's going to do more than just kick up dust. You're actually going to damage someone's property, such as a concrete pad or something. What are you guys going to do to more adequately address those types of problems? Because that's the sort of thing that I'm hearing from my constituents. One, who's sitting here in this room today, has been after you guys since late August of this year, and still has no resolution to his damaged property.
Yes, and that, I actually spoke with you, I believe, on Friday. So, I have initiated, I've, one of my team members was handling that initially. I have stepped in and taken over the damage investigation on that, and it's an ongoing process at this point. But if, you know, we can determine a clear-cut liability, then we will, we will address it.
Okay, well, so you're going to make, you're going to make constituents litigate every time you guys cause some damage? Is that what you're saying?
No, not litigate. So, we do look at before and after pictures. You know, so if, in the instance that we are discussing, you know, we can, we can see prior to our contractors beginning work, they do take pictures.
Sure.
We can see that some of the damage was there. We're not going to admit liability for anything that we didn't cause.
How about when you make the damage that might have been there in the form of some hairline cracks even worse by collapsing that concrete where those hairline cracks previously existed? Because that's what we're talking about here.
Yes, yeah. And then, that's part of what I'm looking at right now, is my taking over the damage investigation.
I, I, I welcome you guys to our community. I think it's great that you're going to have this new service, but I do think you need to treat your future customers fairly. If you damage their property, you should be fixing it because you're the ones that are going to ultimately profit from this, this venture.
Yes, and I don't disagree with you on that. And that's why I said, you know, we have the ongoing investigation. Myself and Bauer are engaged in that. I have not specifically reached out to the gentleman yet, just because I've been getting the background info from my staff member, as well as the contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mumgarth.
I'm just curious as to how far, what's your progress? What percentage of the Papillion area have you already completed installation? How are we getting, moving along? What's your anticipated completion dates? And then, important to some people, when are you going to start making sales?
So, we're currently doing pre-sales. Anybody is more than welcome to call into ALO or go onto our website and pre-sign up for services. But as, as it sits right now, our primary focus has been the Papillion La Vista schools just because we are trying to get that done by the end of the year. That was an agreement that we reached with them. So, we actually do have all 27 of those school sites done and spliced in. We're wrapping up a little odds and ends here and there to get that completed. We are anticipating to have that done by Christmas. As far as the rest of the community, we've been working in one segment, so our segments are called ponds, and that's roughly about 2,500 homes. We have one pond that we are actually about ready to light up. We're hoping to have that done within the next 30 days. And then, we have another pond shortly after that that we'll be lighting up as well. The other ongoing areas, we're varying stages of construction, anywhere between 25% to 50, 60, 75%.
In total, how much of the Papillion developed area have you completed installation for?
A rough estimate, without actually having my computer and my, all my fancy spreadsheets in front of me, I'd say 40%, give or take.
Oh, okay.
And that doesn't include any of the SIDs. We are working with those and getting those, in the process of getting those permitted now.
Okay, so 40% of actually the Papillion, just inside the city of Papillion?
Yes.
Okay. Well, what, can you tell us what area of the town will first see service?
That is a very good question.
Ninety-sixth and Washington, Giles to Portal.
Okay. I mean, what, do you have a, have a plan as to how then you're going to progress through the city?
Yes, and it's, so basically, we take our, our launch pond, which is our first pond, that one that we were just discussing, and then it kind of spiderwebs out from that, and we just kind of, sorry, we kind of rotate out from that.
Okay, if somebody wanted to, you know, just sit and make a price comparison, service comparison, how would they go about contacting you and learning what they could get, you know, what kind of service they can get?
Yeah, definitely. They can go on alocommunications.com or alofiber.com. All of our pricing is available right on the website, or they can just call into our local office, and somebody will be more than happy to kind of walk them through the different packages.
And there's a specific page for Papillion. Every community we serve has its own specific page. So, there is one just for Papillion with the various packages and pricing. But the other piece is there's a map, and it gets updated on a weekly basis that shows, there's, there's four phases to the whole construction process. And they're color-coded, and I'll probably get this wrong, but blue is the design phase. So, everywhere throughout Papillion and the SIDs that's blue, we're still designing those. Then, the next color, let's say it's pink, it's probably wrong, but that is our construction phase. So, you can see where, and you can zoom in to see where we are constructing. And then, it changes to another color, which shows we're actually testing the fiber, light testing, to make sure that it's at the speeds that we want. And then, the last color, I'm pretty confident, is green. And once it turns green, it means that it's, it's lit and ready to go. So, it's those four phases. So, you can watch along on that map if that helps.
When's your projected completion date?
I'll be conservative and say our goal is to have all of Papillion within city limits by the, by this time next year. Now, what, what, what is a challenge is, because of design and engineering, if there's an SID that's right across the street from city limits, it makes sense for us to pick that up. So, we'll continue to update that map as we move along, but right now, I would, I think I'm safe in saying this time next year, city limits should be substantially completed.
Okay, so I should know this by, based on what permission we gave you, but are you going to cover all of our SIDs?
So, our cable franchise agreement, as in every city, is just for city, within city limits. Initially, when we were here, we, our statement was, we want to figure out how to serve the SIDs. And thanks to Mr. Kleffner and others, we actually have a process forward. So, the answer is yes, we have figured out how to serve the SIDs, and we've received a number of inquiries from folks and businesses that are there that would like us to come. So, I'm happy to say we are moving forward and able to serve those as well.
I would assume your goal is to serve them all.
Our goal is, is to dominate throughout the entire state of Nebraska, if I get stated that way. So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Stube.
Thank you. Obviously, you've already talked about communications, and, and so that's important, I think. Notification, I think, is another important point, and I know from, from my experiences that, you know, when I come home, I hit the garage door open, the garage door opens and it closes. So, I'm not necessarily going in the front door, I'm not necessarily going in the back door. And I think one of the things that, that I've found is beneficial, to put something in the yard itself, like a lathe in the ground with some type of a piece of paper on there to give some notification to the property owner. Because then, I think they recognize that something's going to happen. They might not necessarily know what it is. And I think a lot of times that property owners don't necessarily understand that you do have access to the back of the yards. And I do know that a neighbor of mine had one of the large, I'm assuming it's a splice box or whatever it is, that was put in the ground. Those are the types of things that I think potentially are a little disruptive to property owners because they're probably figuring you're just putting a small little conduit in the ground and that's it. So, I think maybe looking at those as being an additional opportunities to make sure that you're communicating properly with, with the property owners. Thank you.
Mr. Ingberg.
Well, along with the communication part, Mr. Miller already mentioned the map, I was going to mention that, but the other side of the coin is, having been here for every cable installation ever done here, I think, I do want to thank ALO and their staff for the excellent job they've done, at least so far, during this phase, because I've had two or three people that live in my area that have had contact with you folks for one reason or another. And summary of it is, they, they, they tell me that for the first time, they actually have a provider that's responsive to them and, and are easy to deal with. So, from that standpoint, I at least wanted to publicly thank you for the, the good job you've done with the people I've had contact with.
Mr. Sunday.
I want to get back to the subject I was talking about earlier. When we do have a homeowner who's got damage, or perceives that they have damage to their property because of the ALO activity on their property, they call their councilperson or the mayor. What should we do? What should we tell them to do? What number should they call?
Yeah, the ideal process is, they can either go onto our website under the construction.
What's, what's your website?
And under FAQ, there's actually a construction tab, and that links them directly to a form that they can fill out, and that goes out to my entire team, and somebody will pick it up, respond. If it's an urgent issue, we respond within 24 hours. It, you know, like an open hole or a damaged water main or something along those lines. If it's considered a non-urgent issue, or if it's just, hey, I'm just kind of curious, what are you guys going to be doing? We try to respond within 48 hours.
Okay. And is there a follow-up phone number they can call if that doesn't get a result?
Yes, that is, can I go grab my business card?
Sure, sure.
And as he's doing that, because you can't over-communicate in these situations, we did put that information into one of the recent water bills that we mailed out, the contact information.
I just wanted to get it out here.
Yeah, exactly.
In the public tonight, so we can all write it down.
Yep.
Because we're getting phone calls.
Yep. And then, if anybody reaches out to the mayor's hotline, they direct them back to that same ALO number, and then periodically, we're publishing it out as well. So, we'll, we'll keep reinforcing that as well.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add, thanks to the city for also putting it on, on your website, that contact information that goes directly to our homepage so that we can receive it. But go ahead, John.
Yes, sorry. That number is 866-255-6322.
And we'll keep reinforcing that from our end periodically as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Glover.
Yeah, so, I've had to go through, through my yard, and I've also had a box put in outside of my fence next to the sidewalk, and, and it was done as well as it could possibly be done, if, if you're going to have a box sitting out there. So, I'm really not unhappy myself with, with the process, that people were very good about marking everything that was supposed to be marked. But for the last month or so, my son has been ripping on me because, because he's got one of those big boxes in his backyard. And it just, he come home one day, here's a big hole in his backyard, and, and this box is right in the middle of the only place that they have basically green grass. Is there some way that, when you're going to put it in the middle of somebody's backyard like that, that you couldn't notify him and talk to him before that? Because obviously, I think the most that I'm hearing, and the people that are unhappy, it's just, they understand that it's got to be done, but where those boxes end up and, and, you know, could it be over a little bit? Could it be, you know, communication would be huge in, in that aspect of, of letting people know where that box is going to be. And I just wonder if there's some way that you could notify people if it's going in the middle of their backyard, right in the middle of their, their grass?
So, we do our best. The issue with that arises, so when we call in our locates to have all the other utilities come out and mark where they're at, so that we make sure we're not hitting, you know, a power line or something, that kind of drives where we're going to be placing the structure. So, if, you know, one side of the yard has all the other utilities on it, we're going to shift over to that more open side, just to ensure that we're not damaging anybody else's infrastructure. As far as being more in the middle of the yard, or, you know, center, right in the middle of the back corner or whatever, we can adjust that, and we usually do try to in instances where we can. The communication part, you know, the biggest thing I would say is, especially with the community outreach team starting, that'll be a big part of what they're going to be discussing, you know, is, here's the rough area of what we're looking at, you know, and then they can come back to my team, and we can say, okay, well, maybe we need to shift this over to the right side of the yard, so it's more in the corner behind some shrubs or, you know, something along those lines.
And, you know, that, that would be a great step because he, he went out to talk to somebody, and obviously, there was nobody there but him that spoke English. So, so he just kind of walked away saying, what, what am I going to do? And, and, you know.
Yeah, definitely.
And if it's happening to him, I've already told him I don't want to hear about it anymore. But, but there's a lot of other people, or maybe not a lot of other people, but there's other people that, that's happening to. And, you know, mine was on the outside of the fence next to the sidewalk, great, you know, but I would have been a little bit miffed too if I had to come home and that big thing was, was sitting right in the middle of my yard. And, you know, and I got a sprinkler system out there, and, which he does too. So, I just, just hope that we can make it better. I know you're not anywhere near done, so if, if you can have people, like you said, that go out and if it, if it ends up in their, their yard, at least maybe have somebody make contact with them.
Yeah, and if you, if you would be so inclined to share his information, we'll, we'll let us reach out to him so we can at least touch base. I mean, we may not be able to change it or anything, but I think it's important we at least make contact with him if you're okay with sharing that.
I, I think he's already knows it's probably not going to change.
Mr. Fanslaw.
But I hear you.
Mr. Fanslaw.
Thank you. So, you've all been through my neighborhood, and I'll tell you, my experience, it was really positive. The staff wasn't that, they didn't communicate much, but they were very friendly and professional. I didn't have any questions of them. I walked around the neighborhood, seemed to be going pretty good. I know my neighbor had a few issues just with where the box was in his backyard, but that's my neighbor. So, so, yeah, they were very friendly, very professional. I do think, I'm glad to hear that the communication is being ramped up. The only call that I got was that the flag, the markings were way ahead of any work being done, and people were trying to do yard maintenance and stuff like that. And I think I talked to Amber about that, and I was able to get some, some questions answered by one of my constituents, or for one of my constituents about that, just that the flags were there probably three, four weeks before anything happened, and they were just wondering if they could pull them and mow, what, stuff like that. So, I'm glad to hear that the communication's going to be ramped up. I do have a question. So, appears you're done in my neighborhood, boxes are in, conduits run. Is the fiber in the conduits yet, or will you be coming back to put the fiber in the conduits?
Yes. So, our stages are, you know, the main construction, the, the, the big dig, as I like to refer to it.
Okay.
And then, after that's completed, we have a QAQC team that comes out, and basically, we check the work of the contractors, make sure the conduit's viable. And that restoration was done, grass, all that stuff has been taken care of. And then, we do bring in a fiber-pulling team. We currently have a couple of contractors that are doing it for us as well, but it's primarily our own in-house team.
Okay.
Pull all the fiber in, then we have the splice team that'll come through, and they couple everything together, make sure it works. And then, we have the testing team. So, it's, we, I always love it when people say, we need to access your yard one time, but it's actually multiple times, but there's only one time that we're actually digging.
Okay. So, that, that's good to know. So, you'll be coming back through neighborhood. So, when you talk about the percentage of how much of the city is done, is that the big dig, as you call it?
Yeah, that's the digging, yes.
Okay, okay. So, you'll be coming back and doing those other stages in the future?
Yes.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Appreciate it, gentlemen. Oh, Mr. Stube.
Yeah, one other question in this regard, too. So, if, the, the other impact to the property owners is that if I decide that I'm going to sign up for fiber, you're going to go from a location, you're going to put a drop in also, and I'm assuming that's going to go someplace on the house where you're actually going to penetrate the wall to get the fiber into the house too, correct?
Yes, yeah. So, we will come out, if you have, all your utilities are buried, we will do a buried line up to the house. It's a trench, not even a trench, it's a slit in the yard about that wide, closes right back up with some moisture, some watering. And then, they do mount about a 12-by-12 box on the outside of the house. When the install technician comes out, drills a single hole through, fishes the fiber through the wall, and we try to make that portion at least as painless as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Greatly appreciate you coming out. And I think we all know, you can't over-communicate on something like this, because no matter how much you do, somebody still, there's still things that are still going to happen. So, want to appreciate coming out, appreciate you working with that new team, part-time on the communication. We've tried to do some videos in communication, we'll continue to reinforce that as well. So, and I think most of the council knows how to reach, reach, reach as well, and we'll make sure that's available, and appreciate it a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item D1, Ordinance 2014, an ordinance to amend Chapter 146 of the Papillion, oh, I forgot the administrator's report and the consent agenda.
Thank you. Winter Wonderland is finally here. It's this Saturday, November 25th. It's from 4:00 to 8:00 PM in downtown Papillion. I hope to see you all there. And along those lines, the Santa sightings are finally starting. The first one's Sunday, December 3rd, at 2:30 PM at the library. And there's several sightings between now and Christmas. If you check out the recreation webpage, it'll give you all the other sightings for anybody that, that's interested. And then, you all should have received electronic copies of the City of Papillion's Affordable Housing Plan. If you haven't received it, let myself or Mark know, and we'll make sure that we get those to you. The Municipal Density and Missing Middle Housing Act requires that the city adopts the plan by January 1st of 2024. And the Planning Commission reviewed the plan and made a recommendation of approval at their November 15th commission meeting. And so, this plan will be on the December 5th City Council Agenda for your consideration of approval. So, again, reach out to us if you have any questions, or Travis on that, or if you need copies. And then, just another update on the sewer agency administrator position. The finalist interviews for that position are being held this week. You should be hearing an announcement within the next week or two on who's selected for that position. And as you recall, the sewer agency is comprised of Sarpy County and the five cities. The agency has grown to where it needs its own administrator, independent of, of what we're doing now. And it's just in time for the first customers to finally start to hook up to the line and use it. And then, just a reminder, City Hall and City Offices will be closed on Thursday, November 23rd, and Friday, November 24th, in observation of Thanksgiving. I hope you guys all have a great Thanksgiving holiday and enjoy time with your family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Gaines? Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero nays.
Motion passes. Now, we're on item D1, Ordinance 2014. An ordinance to amend Chapter 146 of the Papillion Municipal Code entitled "Door-to-Door Sales, Mobile Vendors, and Facility Use and Event Permits," to add clarifying language and correct existing inconsistencies. Sir, Councilman will introduce. In respect, Councilman Ingberg. D2, Ordinance 2016, an ordinance to approve amendments to the Papillion Basic Municipal Employees Plan and Trust Agreement for the City of Papillion Firefighters Pension Plan and Trust. Is there a Councilman will introduce?
Glover.
Introduced by Councilman Glover. E1, Ordinance 2015, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. It's a public hearing, I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? See none, I'll close the public hearing. F1, Resolution R230179. It's a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a revised preliminary plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in the southwest quarter of Section 25 Township 14 North, Range 11 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northeast corner of Highway 370 and Highway 50. The applicant is SB and SK Realty LLC Midstates Utility Trailers. It's a public hearing, I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? See none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230179? Motion by Councilman Stube? Second by Councilman Fenslow. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero nays.
Motion passes. F2, Resolution R230181. A resolution to approve an application for license to sell permissible fireworks at retail from Papillion-Lavista Spirit Football for the 2023 winter fireworks season, December 29th to the 31st. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R230181?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines? Second by Councilman Sunday. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero nays.
It's all the regular agenda items. Committee reports, Public Works, Mr. Stube.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a meeting this evening, is kind of a follow-up to the October Public Works Committee meeting that we had, related to the Halleck Park Road that's going to be renovated. And so, we talked a little bit about what type of cross-section it's going to be, and it's identified as being a 24-foot cross-section with curb and gutter. New concrete street will go in. Talked a little bit about putting in additional parking. It's kind of a, a little bit different than what we're accustomed to, that we're going to be looking at back-and-angle parking, which is an opportunity to make it a safer location, because it is a park setting. And then, the third item would be to actually include additional sidewalk, to connect the, the two dead-end sidewalks together. And so, that will be potentially constructed probably late '24, early '25, just depending upon the process to design and, and move forward with that. There will be a subsequent council action item to actually hire a design consultant to do the design. And then, we talked a little bit about the parking lot for Papio Bay, some questions about that. And that's going to be constructed next year as, as another project that the city will be doing. And that's it.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I think it's all of the committees that met. Any comments from the floor? Comments from the floor? Council comments? Mr. Mungard.
I just wanted to draw the council's attention to the fact that Sarpy County is now considering an ordinance to allow golf cars to ride on county roads. This is something that builds off of what we passed several weeks ago. Their ordinance differs in some ways from ours, as you can understand their, their reasons for that. If you're interested, it is out there on their website. It's been published, published. There will be a public hearing on it next Tuesday at their Tuesday, I believe it's 3 o'clock meeting. Basically, what this does is extends that right to use, drive a golf car on the streets to people in the SIDs. It covers the entire, entire county, but it will be a benefit to people who live outside of the City of Papillion, but someday will be annexed into the City of Papillion. So, we'll see how the county does it.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Last couple of weeks, Sarpy Chamber had their award ceremony, several of us went to that. The, there was an 8th Annual Omaha Commercial Real Estate Summit. Mr. Sturzmann, myself, went to that, learned a lot, got some updates on local economy, what's going on with commercial real estate. Don't know if we necessarily learned anything new, it's more than just probably reinforced, I think, what we're seeing and we know. So, that was good from a planning perspective. Appreciate everybody that came out for the Veterans Day Ceremony at Veterans Park with Post 32. We were able to read the official proclamation, that was the last step in Papillion becoming a Purple Heart City at a national level. And so, the Department of, Nebraska Department of Transportation put those signs up on Highway 50 and 370. So, if you come into town, you'll see Papillion Purple Heart City, and that's a national designation. And then, Veterans Park was, was on the official national map as a Purple Heart Memorial as well with that ceremony. So, thanks, Mr. Gowen, for all of his work there. Had United Cities meeting, the major update there is, again, just trying to watch what legislature may be doing. Session doesn't start until January, so just kind of sit and wait. But again, the regular reminder, if there's anything you want us working on, let us know, and we can be part in those discussions, doing that research. Probably won't affect anything for this next session, but it's not too early to start for the next biennium. So, let us know if there's any legislation. We've had three ribbon cuttings since last council meeting, Chirpy's Cafe and Play Cafe, Casa de Bonbon, which is a coffee shop, and some other things. And then, Target had their expand, their grand opening for their expansion. So, we're still seeing some continued investment, both with national businesses and local entrepreneurs. Ms. Powers already mentioned the wastewater agency update. The major thing there is final interviews on, on the administrators. Hopefully, we'll have that update for you. And then, the Vietnam Memorial update there, the parking lot's been poured. So, if you go up there, the gravel's gone, the entire parking lot is in, that's big for the winter. And some of the flat work is starting to be done. The utility restroom is being built now, most of that structure is up. And two more of the obelisks showed up, so there's four of them on site, and they're 20,000 pounds apiece. So, those are pretty hefty things, but that's coming along. So, feel good about that. Hopefully, winter will cooperate. And then, Winter Wonderland is Saturday. Thank again Parks Department for all of their work of hanging the lights. And the lights will be turned on at 6:00. And the foundation's been doing a lot of work with the downtown businesses to make sure there's a lot of events. So, encourage people to come out for that. Any other council comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Seven eight zero nays.
We are adjourned.